The February 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier? Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Present.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Present.
Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel Heath?
Present.
Counsel Matt?
Present.
Counsel Tison?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuziskas.
Present. Please rise for a side open in court and say the pleasure of the ladies.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of this city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may liberate and remain in harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open meeting recording notice. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? There are no meetings of, I'm sorry, there are no minutes of prior meetings. There are no public hearings, communications from the mayor. Appointments, item one zero nine zero five, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Charlin Esquire to the position of Assistant City Solicitor, for term expiring January first, 2024. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Appointments Committee for study and report.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Walsh, to refer the item to the Appointments Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Orders, item one zero eight nine four, an order appropriating sixty thousand dollars from free cash to the mayor's department professional services account. Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on this early, this item early this evening. This is appropriation from free cash to hire a, for a contract to hire the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, to apply for a multitude of grant programs that are out there at this time. All of these are a one-time, only grant, kind of outlined in our, or is outlined in our packet, from ARPA, the Bi- Parks Infrastructure Plan, among others, which will be sunsetting, many of them at the end of this calendar year. The Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has a senior staff member there that is well-suited to apply for all these type of grants. This will supplement the current grant writing that goes along, goes on in the city. In the city departments right now, plan is for the mayor to meet with all of the departments, department heads, figure out what items need to be on this list that be submitted. The items that are on the capital improvement plan are items that are going to be included, and they will, you know, ping down the list and check from there what they, what additional things might be able to be applied for. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
I'll defer to Counsel Cormier.
Counsel Cormier?
Well, part of the reason is not just for the application, but it's also to research and find the grants that would be applicable to many of the projects that we have here in the community. I know that the figure of twenty-seven hundred possible grants was thrown out there. It's incre, as opposed to only maybe twenty-five or thirty in the past. These are ARPA fundings. It was, did pointed out that even the Hilli administration is appointing somebody in this similar way to apply for the grants on a statewide level. We felt very strongly that it wouldn't take long before these monies would pay for themselves, if you will, with the acquisitions of grants that we might otherwise miss. Some of them are not enormously large, but when you whack, take them all together and collectively can do two things. One, save us money, and two, provide us with services that we might not have been able to do otherwise. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I inquired of the mayor, when I saw this, I inquired of the mayor about the scope of services that would be provided here, and, and the specifications of the contract, and they were in the process of being worked out, according to the mayor. And I thought I'd have, we, I'd have more information from him about that, because this is a contract. We have a office in the city with full-time, with full-time employees who are, whose job it is to apply for and administer grants. And, and my question was why we needed somebody in addition to that. Now, part of that, as I understand it, is that there are a lot of, this is a unique period of time during which there are, there are many grants to, that are available, and, and the staff that we have on, the people we have on staff wouldn't, it would be just overwhelming for our staff to take advantage of that, but I just wanted more information about what the contract would provide, what the scope of services would be, the duration of the contract. This is sixty thousand dollars for a no-bid contract. It sounds like, because we've already identified the people who are, who we want to contract with. I'm concerned that this is, I understand that there's a timeframe when these grants are open and when they close, and the timeframe during which they're available to apply, but I, I'm not satisfied, at least to this point, that we can't do this in-house, because we are paying people who are on staff to do it. And, and I, I'm interested in knowing what it is that we're going to be paying for, which would be provided by the scope of services in a contract, and that's being, apparently according to the mayor, he indicated that they were, he was in the process of working that through today. So I'm going to move, I'm not sure if there's support for this. I'd like to hear from others, but I'd be inclined to ask to, since this has, is, is not, this is the first time in the council agenda, I'd be inclined to move this, refer this back to the Finance Committee to flesh out some additional information, but I'm interested in hearing from others who, how they feel about it, if at all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, on the Monty Tech School Committee, they get amazing amount of grants, and they have a full-time grants administrator, but I do understand what Counsel Walsh is saying, is that we do have people also that serve in the city. We had a grants administrator at the schools. I don't know if that position is still, is still there, so that, you know, that's half of our budget. And I agree with Counsel Walsh. Maybe we need more time to better understand this, but I, I do agree that, you know, some of these, these grants people, they go off and find things, write perfect grants, and we get money. So it's a good thing, but I don't think we need to rush into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
You don't have a second.
Counsel Tyros?
I'd just like to say, I, I do think this is...
If I may, I'll second that for the purposes of discussion. I don't think the Counselor's motion was seconded.
I did hear it seconded.
Okay, so the motion was made by Counsel Walsh to, I'm sorry, can you read the motion?
Refer to Finance Committee.
To refer back to the Finance Committee?
That was my motion, yes.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counsel.
So, further discussion? Thank you. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you. Sorry for just jumping into the topic. So I think it's, it's just good business practice, right, when you have an opportunity in front of yourself to ramp up your capabilities if you don't have the in-house services or capacity to handle the volume that's being approached. My only concern with potential delay for this item is through the chair to the Finance Committee, are, were any grants discussed that we would lose the opportunity on by delaying an additional two to four weeks?
Counsel Ron Cormier?
Well, I did second it, even though I'm not going to support his motion, because I think time is of the essence. It was pointed out that these are like one-shot, we're talking this calendar year. Even, even if we put somebody on board tomorrow, it's, there's still ramp-up time, and the contract hasn't been put into place yet. So the sooner the better. Of course, it is exempt from thirty B by going through the, what's the, the initials of the CMPPC, I think, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. They're a quasi-public agency, and they're available without going through the, the normal bidding process, and they have individuals, that's why they were selected, was pointed out to us by the mayor, that are capable and able to take on this role. It's, it's a sheer volume is what we're talking about, as compared to the normal, we talk in the past, grants maybe fifteen or twenty had a, during the course of a year. Here they're looking at twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred that may be available. We may not be eligible for all of them, but this is where we need the expertise and the extra help.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel General Lawitz?
Just to tack on, this, the multitude of grants has been said is, is out there. Need to act and get on top of these as soon as possible in order to get them. The reality is if there's sixty thousand and one dollars in grants that we wouldn't have got without spending this money, it's a win. I think would be more, I believe it was going to be more than that. There's a lot of money out there, and we don't have the capacity to apply for them correctly the way we're doing it. The rate for the senior staff member that we're going to get there is twenty dollars, or twenty dollars an hour, and I'm strongly in support of getting this done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Tison?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. One point of, that the mayor did make was that this would be one centralized point of contact to deal directly with the mayor in his office as to what grants we are applying for, as opposed to multitudes of departments applying for these grants. I thought that was a, a great point that the mayor made, that he has, he will have that individual conversation with, and understand the direction from where these grants are going. I think the twenty-seven hundred was thrown out there, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that was just for infrastructure alone. I could be wrong.
Yeah.
There are multitudes in, in this upcoming year. So I, I'm in support of this position, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Walsh?
Where the, sixty thousand dollars at twenty dollars an hour, is a lot of hours. And just, where we, where'd the sixty thousand come from? I mean, on what basis is it a sixty thousand dollar contract? What is, what is the scope of services that's going to be provided? We don't know. I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to this. I just don't think we have the information we need in order to sensibly and responsibly vote on it. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get the information that we need to answer those questions and others that come up, and, and, because I understand that we may not have the capacity within-house to do this, but what are the, what are, is this contract going to do for us for sixty thousand dollars for the rest of this calendar year? I think we're, we should know that before we act on a money order of this, of this size, when we're three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars in the hole on Snow and Ice, in the Snow and Ice account.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Final comment. I agree with Counsel Walsh, you know, we, we're first seeing this, and I, and I, like I said before, I, I know there's, well, there's been value at Monty Tech for grants administrators, but do we know what, what the position's going to be, and is it going to go on until next year? There's still open questions, so I, I, I think that we should be, be able to have one more time to be able to check, check on all the facts and figures, and, and then decide from there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Okay, so this is on the motion to send the item back to the Finance Committee?
If I may, for the last time. The mayor did indicate to me that he was going to have a scope of services available to, to us by the time of the meeting, and that has not occurred.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Okay, again, this on the motion to amend, which is to send, this is...
No, it's a motion to refer.
Motion to refer.
This is a motion to refer to, to, back to the, right, this is a motion to refer back to the Finance Committee, made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Cormier. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed say no?
No.
No. If you said no, please raise your left hand. Three noes, seven yeses, the motion passes. Item number one zero eight nine five, an order appropriating a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from free cash to the fire department, new equipment for truck account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, as you're aware, with ARPA funding, we're in line to receive a new heavy rescue fire truck to replace one that's, I believe, about twenty-five years old. The chief set up a committee to go over all of the equipment that's on it, and the mayor has agreed, and the Finance Committee has agreed also, that the vintage of the equipment that's on the truck that we're replacing, much of it needs to be replaced with modern, state equipment. The biggest, one that I'll single out, because I did ask the chief that, was the very last item, was sixty-five, over sixty-five thousand dollars, but it's specialized equipment for an automobile accident to stabilize it. Said there was one recently, they had to call in extra help from elsewhere to do this. Well, we're putting our truck into, putting a new vehicle on the road, they should have the equipment and the tools they needed. And the reason for applying for these, asking for these funds now is an awful long lead time on the equipment, as there is for the vehicle. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas.
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Ordinances, item number one zero eight nine six, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, chapter twenty-two, entitled Assessing Department. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. As stated in the letter, this is a cleanup of the ordinance that's currently in place. Right now, this, it's the time when it was adopted, the city assessor wasn't a full-time department head, or department head-level position. The Finance Committee was in favor of the changed wording, and I move to send the item to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to send the ordinance amendment to first printing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Item one zero eight nine zero, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, section two of chapter thirteen, entitled Council, Council on Aging Membership Terms of Office. Report from the Public Welfare Committee, Counsel Matt?
Yes, the Welfare Committee met and leading to a motion. The mayor was able to, as he did in his letter, present his rationale that the Council on Aging, he'd like, they'd like to amend, amend their membership. The Golden Ages Club and the AARP, people are most, the members of those two groups make up the seven members of the Council on Aging, so they would not like to remove having that designated representatives of the AARP and the Golden Ages as part of that ordinance. So I move that this ordinance be sent to first printing as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Heath, to send the ordinance amendment to first printing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item one zero eight nine one, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, chapter six seventy-five thereof, entitled zoning, to change the classification of certain parcels of land along Route one forty. Report from the Public Welfare Committee, Counsel Matt?
This is to amend this code of the City of Gardner, as you can see in our packet, chapter six seventy-five, entitled zoning along Route one forty, from rural residential two to commercial two, for twelve parcels of land situated northerly, northerly and southerly from Green Street to the Winchton Line. The total area proposed is four-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-five acres. Leading to a motion, the Welfare Committee voted favorably, favorably to recommend this item to the planning board, and then schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Matt to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a public hearing, seconded by Counsel Heath. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item one zero eight nine two, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, chapter six seventy-five thereof, entitled zoning, to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Report from the Public Welfare Committee, Counsel Matt?
Yes, this ordinance is designed and presented to us by the mayor to be proactive in the case of any such sport, sports betting facility would be coming to the city since the legalization of sports betting and the Commonwealth went into effect last year. Leading to a motion, the Welfare Committee voted in favor to refer this item to the planning board and to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Heath, to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a public hearing. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Madam President, I'm certainly hope the Welfare Committee is not trying to avoid bringing money into Gardner, and hopefully that's not the plan. You know, Massachusetts has been behind the, if you, if you will, the wheel on getting sports betting in, as a whole, and bringing money into the whole state. So I'm certainly hopeful that going forward, that they're going to look at this as a possible revenue position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Heath?
I'd just like to thank the mayor for being proactive, as Counsel Matt said, and I'm just confused on how it's not going to bring money in if he's asking for it to be available for the future if we need it. That's the whole purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Item one zero eight nine three, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, chapter six seventy-five thereof, entitled zoning, to amend section ten seventy thereof, entitled marijuana establishments, to increase the quote allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. Counsel Matt?
Again, leading to a motion, the Welfare Committee met, and with the presentation from the mayor and the support from the police chief, as you can see the documentation in our packets supporting this proposal, the Welfare Committee discussed this item and voted to refer this to the council to schedule a public hearing, so I make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Heath, to schedule a public hearing. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Does this require input of the planning board? To zoning?
This would be zoning, so the motion be to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a public hearing for the, for the process?
Yes.
So you'd like to amend?
So I amend my motion to, to, to refer this to the planning board and to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Heath, to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a public hearing. Is there discussion on the motion, the amended motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item one zero nine zero six, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner by adding a new chapter, five oh two, to be entitled Mobile Food Operations, which chapter provides for the regulations for food operating food truck services in the city. Counsel Tison?
Madam President, Public Safety has not met since our last meeting, so we were, I would like to request more time on behalf of the Public Safety.
I think it's been referred. What's that? I don't think it's been referred.
Oh, it hasn't?
Refer it.
I refer it to Public Safety, my apologies.
Motion, so, so motion made by Counsel Tison, seconded by Counsel Harder, to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item, Communications, item one zero eight nine seven, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, twenty Central Street. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee is favorable on this one, as we are all the way through nineteen, ten, nine oh four. These are all the order of taking, both permanent and temporary, having to do with the Uptown Rotary, the monies of which we appropriated at a recent meeting. So we're in favor of this, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to, to pass the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, these items were, were presented also to the Public Service Committee by the city engineer, who explained that all of these were required as part of the, the plans for the Uptown Rotary revisions that were required by the Department of Transportation, whose TIF, TIPS funding is paying for the project, at least in large part. So the, although we didn't take a vote on it, it was certainly the position of the city engineer that these things are, need to be passed in a timely manner, so that the project can be, can be bid and, and work on the project to be done in the current season, or the upcoming season, work season. So I'm hopeful that this, as well as the others, pass in a timely, at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel, yeah. Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero eight nine eight, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, thirteen Elm Street.
Motion to pass the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero eight nine nine, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, twenty-two Elm Street.
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero nine zero zero, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, twenty-three Elm Street.
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero nine zero one, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, nine Green Street.
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item one zero nine zero two, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, fifteen Green Street.
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz, to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Wanda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item 10903, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, 12 Pearl Street.
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Dernalowits to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowits?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item 10904, an order of taking for easements, temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Uptown Rotary Construction, 16 Woodland Avenue.
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Dernalowits to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowits?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item number 10907, a petition by National Grid to install new handhole in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Edgell Street to install new handhole at the edge of 69 Edgell Street, property at approximately forty-two point five seven seven three four two seven one dash nine eight two two three seven, install two to three inch conduit from pole six Edgell Street to new handhole. Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Leading up to a motion, it's hard for me to imagine that forty-two point five seven seven three four two is approximate. In any event, move the item be referred to the Service Committee and for the President to schedule a public hearing on the item.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros to refer the item to the Public Service Committee and for a public hearing to be scheduled. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item 10908, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Edgell Street, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Edgell Street, beginning at a point approximately three hundred feet east of the center line of the intersection of Westford Street and Edgell Street, relocate pole number eight approximately forty-five feet east of its current location. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I move the item be referred to the Public Service Committee and for the President to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros to refer the item to the Public Service Committee and to schedule a public hearing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item 10909, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Cross Street, to install four jointly owned poles on Cross Street, beginning at a point approximately fifteen feet north of the center line of the intersection of Lawrence Street and Cross Street, and continuing approximately eight hundred feet in a west direction. Install four new poles on Cross Street. Counsel Walsh?
Move that the item be referred to the Public Service Committee and for the President to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros to refer the item to the Public Service Committee and to schedule a public hearing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Reports of standing committees, appointments committee, item 10880, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Leonette Roy to the position of housing authority member for term expiring December 27, 2027. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor to discuss the appointment. Ms. Roy was recommended by the board to fill a vacancy. She is an active member of our community and is very familiar with city hall operations. The committee was unanimous in favor, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Safety Committee, item 10861, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 42, entitled One Way Street. Counsel Tison?
Since our last meeting, I've visited Reagan Street several times, gone up and down the street, and definitely feel that there is a need. However, with Counselor Cormier not being here this night, tonight, and us not meeting yet as a public safety, to review and discuss, we're requesting more time.
The committee, if there's an objection, the committee will be granted more time? Committee will be granted more time. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, committee in the whole, item 10885, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 171 thereof, entitled Personnel, to change compensation schedule one yearly salaries, mayor and city counselors. We had a public, I don't know, I'm sorry, we had an informal meeting earlier this evening on this item. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, in light of the discussion at our informal meeting, as well as the requirements, the apparent requirements of the ordinance that is in play here, I move that the item be referred back to the Finance Committee for the study and a recommendation.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Matt to refer the item back to the Finance Committee for further study and for recommendation. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. Moving into new business, Counselor Heath.
Should have moved something. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I got to speak with the police chief the other day, and I am really ecstatic about some of the cadets that are coming in. I know a couple of them, so they're in training and everything else, so I'm really excited about some of these new officers that are going to be coming, and I can't wait to come, well, I can't wait for them to be here for me to shake their hand after T. Swizerman. And that's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing new this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dernalowits?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Matt?
I have no new business this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to formally say I'm sorry to the Welfare Committee and the Council as a whole for my sports betting thing. My son's a big sports better, and saying how much the whole state and everybody's losing, and I got caught up in it, and I apologize. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tison?
Yes, real quick, I just want to talk about the energy at Gardner High School last night. It was great to see, the boys didn't get the results that they want, the girls did win. It's not districts yet, but it was great to see the pride of the students at Gardner High School that they take in this school, and it just keeps growing. It's grown a lot over the last ten years, and I'm proud to be, you know, a resident here to see that, and the work that's being done by the people who mold our youth. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Harder?
Nothing new this week, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Walsh?
Nothing new for me. Thank you.
Nothing new for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have nothing this evening. I'll detain the motion to adjourn after the closing prayer.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Boone, seconded by Counselor Tyros. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion passes. All my desire, who's here so well, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of your deliberation in action within the course of this meeting. Blessed O Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people who represent us here, and do thou attend to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen. Meeting's ended. Thank you, everyone.